August 18th, Central Curry School District Board of Directors, September 18th, 2019, at the Gold Beach High School Library. Stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If some responsible party that brought their notebook would be blessed us with the district mission statement, I would appreciate it.
Mission of Central Curry School District in partnership with families and communities is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of educational excellence.
Thank you. All right, number two, agenda changes?
I have no changes for tonight. We're on as a as published.
Proceed as is. All right, number three, presentation, we're going to introduce the new licensed staff.
So if each principal would do that for us, please.
Sure. Sure, I'll go first. Some of mine had a conflict tonight, so we're going to get them to another meeting, but I the best ones are here. So I'll say, I was getting recorded, I'm in trouble. So I'll take half of, this is Kelsey.
Yep.
Kershaw. Okay, and she teaches for me music.
And for us, band and choir and pet band.
And she's a wonderful.
I finished the sentence. My improv skills are coming in now, she's a wonderful, she's been a wonderful addition to our staff.
Yeah, she's doing a great job, and she kind of, we didn't let her know in advance that we were going to change the schedule a little bit, she'd have primary music, but she's really doing a great job with our primary students too. First, every K5 student will have half a year of one music a day a week, so it's not a lot, but it gives, it's a little bit, and gets them maybe on the right track too. So, next, the lady that probably most of you recognize, she was kind of a volunteer slash, we gave her a little stipend to help us out with special education last year, Deb Dorn. And she's, this is the third time she's retired, come out of retirement, and she was in Brookings and worked with Helena Shernian down there in Brookings, and so they moved up here and she, I think, I think if I remember right, she called me in the middle of the summer, not this, or last summer, and said, "I'm bored, what can I do?" And so she's been amazing, you know, she's wonderfully getting our special ed program on track and legal and everything else that we need to, and does a great job with the kids and with the staff too, so. Michelle Hamm is next, and Michelle is famous from coming from the metropolis of powers, Oregon. She taught up there a couple years ago, and then she went to Portland at a charter school, and then we were lucky to get her back, and her twin boys, I just met one yesterday, and they're getting ready to go off to college, so.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, so it's going to be quick. So we need to get her out of here quick tonight, so she can have a good time with her boys tonight too, so. And then going further down, Perry, you know Perry, he's just Perry. And Gabe, and Deborah Watson is our fifth grade teacher from Clamath Falls.
Grants Pass.
Or Grants, why did I do that? Grants Pass, yes, Grants Pass. And she just put her house on the market over there, and so if you need a house in that area, let her know, and she's currently looking in this area, so her husband and her dogs and her cats can move over here. All right, okay. And next to her is Brad Roner, second grade, and Brad's from Spokane, so great city to come from, and a long ways away to the ocean, but he's really fitting, he's already caught some fish, and done some surfing, and done a little bit of everything around here, so he's really fitting well. Tina, you know Tina, my wonderful secretary, and you know, and Danielle Sprouse is from California, down in Sacramento, no?
Sonoma County.
Yes.
Napa.
Yes, and she's really been doing a great job, and she has a close relationship with the UPS guy, so we see UPS a little more than we usually do. Anyway, this is my staff, Dawn couldn't be here, she lives in Port Orford, she already had a commitment tonight, she teaches first grade, and so she'll be at a future board meeting too, but it's really been a wonderful start to the year, and it's really wonderful how these new people kind of assimilated into our staff and brought in new ideas and new energy, and it's been really, really a good start to the year, thanks to that, those guys, and my rego staff, too.
Welcome. So I have the pleasure of introducing one, two and a half staff members, we already kind of hit Kelsey, but I have to say, this year at the high school is my first time hiring this many new teachers, and I, I can't say that I did anything exceptional about it, but I really feel like we got a really great group of hires. So we already introduced Kelsey, she's doing a great job building relationships in the music program, the band has rebuilt after, last year was down to about five kids, we're back up over eighteen?
It's right around sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen, yeah, it's a big growth again in a year, which is, it really, that's, that's really exciting to see it taking off, and she's working on getting the pet band back to the football games and things like that, so that section that says banquet is actually going to have a band there, so that's kind of exciting. Jake Bigelow, Jake came to us to teach science here, and the thing that I really, I've enjoyed about Jake is that Jake's whole thing was that he wanted to be a science teacher because he truly wanted to be a math scientist, and if he can get kids that enthusiastic about science, then I'm on board. Jake came to us with some really great ideas about actually getting kids doing science as opposed to sitting and learning and reading and doing worksheets, they're actually engaging in science thinking like scientists and working towards that, so he's already, he kind of got through his first high school lab, and he took on a lot all at once for chemistry, so it was kind of a challenge, but he got out there and it was a lot of fun to see, so we're looking forward to more from him. And then Michelle Pierce, who, Michelle had probably my favorite interview moment ever, which was, I called her because we'd gotten her application overnight, I'm like, "Hey, how you doing?" "Great, I'm driving through your state right now." "Oh, okay, where are you at?" "Uh, well, I'm about ten minutes north of Gold Beach." "Oh, would you like to come in for an interview?" And she's like, "Yep, let me get checked into a hotel and I'll be right there," and so she came in, we did the interview all the same day that I made the phone call, and we had the decision made to hire her that day as well. Michelle brings a huge amount of talent and experience out of Iowa, and she really came in and just said, "This is what I expect for my math students, this is what I want them to do," and she is kicking butt and taking names. She also stepped right into our volleyball coaching position, she said, "You know, I haven't coached volleyball before, but I have coached, here's my philosophy," it was all about building relationships with kids and trust with kids, and that's what we're looking after, looking at, what we are looking for, there we go, at the high school in general, and she has done a great job taking this group of girls and bringing them together and really forging them into a group that sticks together and wants to be together, so she's doing a great job, and I really like that, you know, Michelle fills the room even more than I do, so I enjoy letting her just occasionally do it, so, you know. So we, yeah.
Thank you.
We won't embarrass you for another picture, a group picture, but, so again, thank you for coming tonight, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or this would be a good time to exit if you wanted to do that.
Thank you guys. You guys are going to stay. All right, number four. Consent agenda, approve minutes of the August 21st regular meeting and declaring district property as surplus. Example.
Yeah, so it's in here in the white, a company packet to the left.
Oh.
Yeah, so the electronics, if that's what you're speaking of, at the high school, the recommendations, about five TVs, it just says electronics on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, lawnmower, Ford truck, electronics.
Five TVs, some DVRs, some VCH, uh, VCRs as well, and then I expect that the elementary will have some, some other items coming in at a later time. Tim, I'm sorry, I was supposed to tell you for Jack, the pickup is dead. Okay, yeah.
This part of the stuff you're looking at, part of that surplus sale.
Yes, which is tomorrow. Yes, that's correct. And things that are, like the pickup, we'll put on public auction, so people locally can bid as well as people who, a lot of nineteen eighty-nine Ford pickup that needs work, a lot of work, more work than it's worth.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second. All's in favor? All right. Aye. Motion passive, four to zero. All right, number five, citizen input, guests, state your name and address for the record and keep it five minutes.
Perry Kishalat, 35665 Coit Creek Road, Gold Beach, and I'm a horrible import to secret, I'll go by a little bit of a script, and please feel free to correct me if you see any errors in any of my statements, but basically, Sydney Rose, as of now, is no longer the counselor at Riley Creek, she rightly refused to sign a contract because it was not what was originally promised her, an error was made by the district office where, when she took the counseling job, she ended up losing five days of pay each year she worked, and it was also an oversight on her part, we had new contracts this year, so she looked at it and said, "Hey, wait, something's wrong." And I think it ends up being only a few hundred dollars, but from what I understand, the superintendent is willing to make it right next year with the days that are supposed to be in there, but he was not willing to make it an issue this year, so when we got home this morning from Kuzvee, and she opened her email, she found out that the contract as it was stood, and so she was not willing to sign it, which I agree with. And the agreement was made with the previous superintendent, Roy Durfee, and even though that's the case, the district should, should still honor it, and I believe a person's word should mean something, and right now, I'm seriously concerned about the district's lack of credibility. I talked to, Chris Higgins talked to me, he went to school with many of you, and he was told that he would be paid a stipend for.
Perry, we're getting off into kind of personnel matters, and I don't, it's kind of, I'm not sure where the line is exactly, but we're, we're on, I mean, you can speak to district matters as a whole, but not to specific personnel, but, yeah. Keep it to district-wide, but not about specific personnel.
Okay.
If, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll try and do that. And I was just wondering with all this money, was it going to be used to relocate the district office, which would negatively affect our students, because money being spent would not, shouldn't directly affect them, and losing citizen's counselor will not affect the district office or Gold Beach High School, but it will severely impact the students, parents, and staff at Riley Creek, and I believe this would be a horrible mistake, she makes a huge difference, and before you make any major decisions, I feel like you should talk to both parties involved, not to just one, if I have an issue with Tom, and you talk to just Tom, I would hope you would come and talk to me too, because we all have our own motives, and before you make any decision, don't just blindly agree to everything that's presented in front of you, please question it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Tina Moreno, 24957 Hysterical Loop, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I'm going to jump on Perry's bandwagon, and there were things that have been said in board meetings regarding myself, I know that you all know that I was looking for more money last year, more that was being offered to me, one of the justifications of not giving me that money was because work was going to be taken off of my job description and off of my plate. Not only has that not happened, but work has increased, specifically in the areas that you were told, I was told, were going to be taken off of my plate, so in jumping on Perry's bandwagon, it comes with a word of honor, and I have been such a huge proponent of the district and the board for a long time, and I just want you to know and be aware that that's slipping, not just for me.
That's Tim.
I'm, and I'm, I'm not going to comment, but I'm going to make the assumption that you guys are discussing with Tim.
Yes, we have, before I came to the board, yes, we have. I went through both channels.
All right, anybody else? Very good. All right, number six, district reports, Crystal?
You have your financial reports in front of you, still obviously not a lot of activity. This is the expenditure detail for the month, when you get down to the end, you can see it's about $200,000, which is a little high, if you go into page four, you will see that this is the time of year that we pay the case, which is our property and casualty insurance, which is over, this year is going to be, is over $81,000. So every year you can expect it, July, August, right around this time, that's, that's when that happens, and that's why that's a little bit higher. The expenditure report, which is your blue, once again, still not a lot of activity, we still haven't had that first, what we call the main payroll of the year, so our teachers haven't been paid yet, a lot of our instructional staff hasn't been paid yet, so this is going to drastically change next month, when you have the September report, and you're going to be able to see that difference, how that looks. As there is not very much activity on that, there's also not a whole lot of revenue coming in this time of year, which is your yellow sheet, and you can see the biggest revenue we have in the general fund is still in at zero, because obviously people have not paid their current year taxes yet, because we have not received the property tax bill yet. That will drastically change in November. And then you have your corresponding cash sheet. And then I did want to talk to you, I gave everyone one of these sheets, called my meal time, we sort of came into this century finally, and we have a new meal time program, the one we had before, I'm, it might have been the 1942 version, I think, we were still literally wheeling a computer down to the cafeteria and back, so we have a new system now, it's been challenging, Shelley Carl at the district has been instrumental in helping get this implemented, because she knows sort of both ends of it, now the district end as well as the, the school end. Some pretty nice things about this, obviously if you look at the highlighted section on there, you can see that parents have a lot more availability now to know what's going on with their kids, what their kids are purchasing, you know, if they're eating breakfast when they say they're not, it's going to show up on the statement if they, if they go in and do one of these accounts, they can pay by a credit card now, online, or with an app, they can set up reminders for themselves, which says, "Hey, you know, I'm down to $10, that's right, I need to pay it," or they can set up automatic payments now, so we're pretty excited about this. One of the reasons we're really excited is, I actually have a list here, when we rolled over the people into this new system, obviously we didn't bring in our past accounts for kids that are, you know, gone, but just looking at our current accounts, right now we have almost employees and students altogether about a negative $9,000 balance, for people that have negative balances right now in this account, so I want to let you know that we're going to be working on this diligently, and this was sort of step one for us, was to be able to provide an alternative, alternative payment method for these families, so that it will be easier for them, so they can schedule regular payments, it's not always easy to remember that you need to run down to the school and cut a check or send a check with your kid and hope that, you know, it ends up at the office, so, so we're working, going to work with families and try to get this quite lowered quite a bit.
Yeah, I found slips and backpacks for, you know, minus $80, this would have been nice to known about two months ago, so yeah, no, I'm, I'm excited.
And we, we have some sort of, we're working right now on some sort of multiple levels, where those schools will, they're able to not only send out those paper sheets, for some, but they're able to send out emails now to parents, so that will help, and then once you get to a different level, Shelley at the district office will then be sending out the letters, once you get to a certain point on, on this list, and then once you get to another point on this list, then it's going to come to me, and I will be working with our child nutrition program manager to try to help get some of these bigger balances fixed.
When does this go into effect?
It's in effect right now.
There it is, oh, okay. I can track Cleo's chocolate milk habit with this?
It's probably been at least a week of mailing with them, and each, each student has an ID number, can go right to the website and put in the.
Eighteen in one week, you can chocolate milk.
I think one of our trainers said that this was really helpful for him as a parent, because he could not understand why, where the money was going, and found out his child was buying all the cart items for the entire table, and this is how he found out, so it is, you know, information for parents is good, and so this will, we hope will be very helpful, so we're excited.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Crystal? Moving on, student representative report, Ms. Samantha Major and Ms. Isabel Ann Walker, hello?
Hello.
The floor is yours, you can go in any order you want.
All right, so, first time at these things, I'm just going to kind of take a shot at it, I'm sure you guys kind of want to know the culture of the school, and what's been going on from a student's perspective. Sports-wise, obviously football has been a lot harder, but they're just kind of taking it the best they can and taking it as a learning experience, because you always learn the most when you're having the hardest time, and I think the boys are really taking that in stride this year, and, you know, always looking forward to the next one. With volleyball and the new coach also being a new teacher, and they don't, you know, there's not that history, I think it is going extremely well, and she also brings new perspectives to the school, so I really enjoy that, and there's definitely bringing the people together on a team that I've noticed. Cross-country, I do not know much about them, other than that it's like two or three runners. I, that's, yeah, I don't know much about it, yeah, so I don't want to give you some misinformation, what else is going on?
Last week we had our first pep assembly, that went well, we just introduced the sports teams, our goal kind of this year is to get the spirit up and the participation, getting people at more games and more support, so that's actually been really, really well, these freshmen this year really have a sparkle in their eyes, so hopefully they'll stay there.
Yeah, it's just, the lot of student council, I know is working really hard and putting all the effort into spirit, and I know that a lot of, like, the school as a whole, and even the classes as individuals, are coming together a lot this year, and it's kind of like, wow, I like this, this is fun, and for mathletes, I'm excited because I like mathletes. We have some of the biggest numbers this year that I can ever remember, like, we're going to wreck the school, just because like, no one's going to be here, we have like five full teams plus so many extras, and it's just so exciting to see these people into math. But the academics especially, I'm really happy with the new teachers here, Ms. Pierce is definitely bringing a whole new atmosphere to a math now, and.
And have her as a teacher, and I love her, her positive energy, even through the hallways, she's awesome.
And anything that you need, you know, she'll always be there, and she'll get it for you whether she is able to or not, a lot with that, and Bigelow, again, a new teacher, it's just the new teacher atmosphere and the scientist history, it was kind of hard, but like, everyone understands, like, he knows a lot, like, he is a smarty right there, and everyone can kind of appreciate that a lot, and the fact that he actually brought us in as a chem, like, in the chemistry class, like, he brought us in and we were doing all these really cool experiments that we've never done, and we're like, wow, you know, we're doing a lot more hands-on things, and like, just experiencing that, and that'll also capture a lot more interest from students that aren't like, is, I want to know the nerdy stuff, so I really do appreciate that, and then Kershaw, having her in band, I have way too many classes, she knows a lot, she's always in the loop with new band programs, and just recently, I personally was talking to her about a honor band in Seattle that she is going to get me signed up for and auditioning for, and she's just in the loop, she's trying really hard, she's doing pep band, and just pushing all these kids, and she's always has a smile on her face, and it's a great atmosphere for all of them as new teachers, which is a really good feeling for forward-moving from that. I don't know if there's anything specific you guys would like to hear.
That's good. What grades are you guys in?
We're seniors.
Both seniors, huh? Very good.
So Isabel is the ASV president, and Sam's the senior class president, and they decided together to come together tonight for the first one, and may continue to do it this way, or balance each other out, or cover for each other what one's bound to be.
Senior year's very busy.
Thank you for being here.
We appreciate you.
And same for you guys, if you, if you want to stay, you're welcome to, if you have other things to do, we understand.
You know, I'm like, we got to cancel stuff tomorrow. Thank you guys.
Principal reports, Mr. Gabe?
Yes, sorry, I won't be my jolly self, that was a shock to me, so that I lost one of the best counselors I've ever had, so hopefully we can get it worked out, just a misunderstanding, I think, hopefully we can get that going. Anyway, football, we had to cancel, cancel the game, and they were like 10 minutes up the road, is all, from Coke Hill, and when the power went out, and it turned out to be a good call, because the power was out for three hours or whatever, if it would have come back on after 10 minutes, it would have been a bad call, so, so it was one of those things where you kind of sweated it out, and, but Corby and Chris Higgins is volunteering in football, and they're really doing a good job with the kids, and I think that's going to, it will only help the high school program as these kids move up too, and Kevin and Corby are really working together, so it's kind of a seamless transition that we haven't had in the past, so that's, that's been a really good thing too. Volleyball, they're over there right now, it's always a struggle, volleyball, but they're doing their best, and cross-country, they've had three different coaches in the last two weeks, but we finally nailed it down today, Mr. Dubrav is going to be coaching the two girls that we have in cross-country, and I talked to the mom, there was a concern, actually I'll share, I think I had a chance to talk to Tim today, her husband dropped off the kids for the meet at Brookings on Saturday, and he wasn't kind of paying attention, and a black Suburban pulled up, and next thing you know, his kid was gone, so, so it scared him, because that's our district vehicle, and no one knows it, so, maybe we need to slap a magnet on the side. Sorry, my mom almost called 911 until she got ahold of her daughter, and, "No, no, I'm with the coach, the coach is right here," you know, so, so that was kind of funny, and it turned out to be funny, it wasn't funny at the time. Attendance, we kind of had a meeting today, and it's, it's going really well, and I really attribute that to Tina's hard work last year, and kind of got some kids, just some, they know, if we don't come to school, Ms. Tina's going to call us, and we don't want that to happen, so, they're, they're doing really well, and we've got the big banner up, if you've been at Riley Creek, you've seen that big bat flag thing, and that's pretty cool to have, have out there. Snack pack, we moved it to Thursday, just because Friday with that, that PD time and that early dismissal, it just backed up too close to lunch, and it was just kind of a crazy time in the cafeteria, so, we're going to try it and see, because, you know, the food initially was attended for weekend, so we're going to kind of maybe pull some of the parents and see if it's still helping them out over the weekend, or the kids just gobbling all up on Thursday night, it's losing its purpose, so, we're going to look into that and see how that's going on, on the Thursdays. Behavior, as always, especially with the new kindergartners, and we have, have some that's like herding cats with some of them, and a few kids got bit this week, a couple got kicked, and, and someone got spit on, and.
Broken arm.
Oh, yeah, a broken arm, too, a broken arm, yeah.
A kindergarten?
A kindergarten. He's cried every day since.
Yeah, and luckily, you know, we have Tina and Catherine in the office. Yeah, and luckily, you know, we have Tina and Catherine in the office because I, I'm kinda, you know, my dad was like, ah, you're okay, get out there. You know, and so I kinda go through the office, oh, get out there, you're okay, you know, and then it turns out like, oh, you got a broken arm. So, um, so I feel about this tall, you know, so I actually played with him the day of recess and so that was, you know, hopefully I'm getting back in his good graces, you know, so. But that, and overall, you know, we just, we have a really good system, the new teachers are really working with our RTI, our PBS system. And the middle school's really being a good role model for everybody else because they really have it nailed, how they're dealing with the kids and providing uh, activities for the kids, for incentives, but also teaching them what it's like to behave and how to, how to actually do things, not just be quiet in the hallways, how, what does that mean? You know, and so they're really doing a good job with, with the kids with that. Uh, student council, we had voting speeches this morning, they were interesting, we actually had Donald Trump there. A student dressed up as Donald Trump. And, and ones, um, so. So president was Tina Wright. I don't know if he borrowed his dad's wig or what, his mom's wig. Uh, vice president, Kason Wardle, secretary, Lizzie Inez-Vasquez, and treasurer, Ian Richards. So it's kind of a good representation of sixth, seventh and eighth graders and they're really good kids. And actually, all the kids that, that, that went for it, uh, were good kids and, and we're looking forward to student council doing some great things this year. Uh, it's also led, co-led by Mrs. Zuber and Ms. Keel. They do a great job with that too. Yearbook, uh, Ms. Nichols contacted me about a month ago, I think, and, and wanted to have her kids help us at Riley Creek get a, a yearbook going. So, we're working on that. Uh, we committed to, with some student council money to, uh, I think a hundred yearbooks. And so, we can actually add more though, uh, sometime in the spring if we do some pre-orders and see how that goes. But we haven't had a yearbook, uh, for, I don't know, ten, twelve years maybe at Riley Creek. So it'll be kinda fun, I think it's, it's always fun to look at old yearbooks when you get older, you know, and I think the parents will like that too. Rain, uh, where did this come from? You know, usually you like a month or so of school to kinda teach the kids about recess and stuff and not pack them all into the play shed. And we've been having to pack them into the play shed, so it's been kinda crazy. So, hopefully that it's nice out now, maybe that'll stick for a couple days and uh, anyway, get us through the weekend too. Um, I'd also wanna comment just real quick on, on PD time. Tim and whoever else was, was responsible for that last year, I think your leadership team. Uh, we, we've always had PD time for the cla- certified staff. And when those PD days came or the time came, the classified staff, see you later. And so now, we, it was, it's been designed so that the classified staff can stay. And that is, so, you know, I spent almost an hour with just my classified staff and I haven't been able to do that since we cut them, since they were eight-hour employees. And so that was super powerful for them to, to talk to me about things that they're seeing, their concerns, and for me to kinda train them a little bit on some things that I needed them to do. And then, I'm really looking forward to our, our first staffing in October, the first, uh, Friday of the month of having this teachers and staff together. And that's gonna, that's gonna really help and benefit Riley Creek a lot. Uh, so thank you for, you guys for approving it and for Tim for, for thinking of it too. And then, um, while I'm thinking of it, uh, the football game that was canceled yesterday is rescheduled for tomorrow. We'll be out here at four-thirty tomorrow. Uh, and I think we're planning on trying to play two games. Uh, we both have eleven seventh graders and we both have nine eighth graders. So we're gonna try to uh, make it work, a nine-man football. And that's all that I had unless anybody has any questions or concerns about anything.
I didn't hear it or didn't pay attention, you had them here for cell phone policy?
Oh, I skipped that, um, by accident, sorry. Um, I was excited about student council, you know. The new cell phone policy is at the middle school. And our, our policy has always been, keep it out of sight, uh, you know, your parents want you to have it for emergencies, you use it for an emergency and that's all. Uh, and the definition of what's an emergency changes, you know, with, with every kid. So, uh, the junior high pe- uh, staff talked and it's not, it's not practical to tell a junior high kid or a high school kid, I guess, you're not gonna use your phone from eight AM in the morning until three-thirty, it's just not gonna happen. And so what we were doing was making criminals out of every child because they would go in the bathroom or, or hide in their locker and stuff. So what we decided to do is let's, let's give them a little, a little responsibility. And so, uh, we bought these uh, plastic things that are cell phone holders and so, and they're numbered. So every classroom has one, so when the kids walk into the class, they, like, if I'm number five, my phone always goes at number five. It's shut off, doesn't vibrate, doesn't do anything, it's shut off. And then when I leave class, I pick it up out of number five. And then when I'm in the hallway, that four-minute passing period, if I need to call mom, or, I know, not call, text mom or message mom, I can do that. Uh, we don't allow them to, to videotape or take pictures because a lot of kids are no photos, we're not allowed to do that. So that four-minute passing period, um, we let them, we let them use their phones. And uh, it's been a week, week and a half now and it seems to be going okay. Uh, Tina's the repository of the, of the cell phones, when the kids get caught using them inappropriately, uh, we, they go to her and then she logs in. Uh, you know, so Tom, this is just the third time, parents have to pick it up or whatever the consequence is for the amount of times. And I think the numbers have gone down with-
I don't think we've had any in, in the last week.
Yeah, so that's been really good. And uh, and just sometimes when you give the kids a little responsibility, it's surprising that they come through for it, you know, too, so. And I'm sure there'll be issues here and there, um, but uh, but so far it's been really well, well, well done. Thanks for asking Scott, I'm sorry I skipped it.
Very good. Mr. Max?
Okay. So, uh, we had, we've hit the, I, I, you know, it was interesting, I went and looked back at my first ever, uh, board principals report and that was a year ago this week. Uh, the first thing I had was the first weeks of school staff commentary regarding first weeks of school and it was just like, you know, it's interesting to hear the same kinda things being said around, but even more so. So last year I was able to report that a number of the teachers had come to me and said, wow, our hallways are just a lot more positive, a lot more, you know, the, the, things are, things are nice, you know, it's nice to have this start. Uh, what was interesting this year was to have the same thing come up and then have a couple of staff members go, wow, we've been able to say that two years in a row. Like, it's been a really positive start to the year. And now, instead of just being like sort of an outlier where the, hey, we had a good year, it's now we're starting to see a culture developing where the hallways are a more positive place and that's a really, that's a nice thing to see. So I thought it was worth bringing back. Um, our new staff that you got introduced to tonight have brought an entirely different set of energies to the school. It's been a lot of fun to watch. Um, in addition to that, we were able to add a couple of new electives this year that have been a lot of fun to kinda drop in on and see teachers getting to do something that they're excited about. Um, so we had a drama, we had a creative writing, uh, we added a Spanish, uh, college now Spanish, um, as well as a digital arts and design class. And all, all four of those classes, people are really excited about. Kids are getting to engage with teachers the way that teachers wanna be able to engage with them. They're getting to teach something that they're passionate about, something new that they're excited about. Um, so I think that contributes to the year, sort of that positive cultural air. Uh, back to school night, we had, again, looking back last year, I reported about twenty percent of our families made it, we had fewer this year. And I tried, you know, to spend some time evaluating why that was and actually, one thing that came to mind is that dang Ascend program, you know? They, uh, they came in and they trained our freshmen really well. And last year when I looked at the, the people who had signed in, primarily they were freshman families that did back to school night. Uh, so many of them had already been trained so well, their families had spent so much time here, they already kinda went, well, I'm not sure we need to go. So, next year, looking ahead, we need to revamp what back to school night is. Um, so we just, we, the, the typical, hey, this is your teacher, this is your class. Um, we're recognizing that, okay, that's, that's not what people are looking for anymore, so it's time to do something a little different. Um, so that'll be, that'll be changing next year. Um, I put this on here just in case, I wasn't sure when we were doing the new staff introduction, so you can skip all it too, which is uh, just who's teaching what. Uh, the goals, I just actually have to submit the uh, state report card narrative about ten minutes before y'all got here. Uh, but the three goals that I set for the school on that, uh, number one is attendance, working on continuing to positively increase our attendance. Last year, we, we had a couple of high flyers, we also just had a, a culture where kids, you know, they didn't get called in, they're high school students. And so we would find out, well, no, it's a UA, well, I didn't know my kid was there, wasn't there, or they were sick. And we'd find out about it a couple of days afterwards to supplement Bligher's best efforts. Um, so we're looking at positive, um, incentives and things like that to try to re, rebuild that. Um, we implemented a new PLC this year, which is our student success team. Um, and that's gonna be really targeting those kids that are struggling in any way, whether it's attendance or academically or behaviorally. Uh, we actually already made our first recommendation for the next time that team meets, which is next week regarding attendance. Wow, I wrote SSL. Excuse me, that should've been SCL, student-centered learning. Believe it or not, I used to teach English. Uh, so student-centered learning and technology, um, so the focus being that we've gotten all this new technology, we're getting the infrastructure put in place, well, now we need to teach teachers to use it in a meaningful way, which is more than just go look this up on Wikipedia and then write an essay about it. Um, so we're gonna be talking a lot about blended learning in classrooms, we're gonna be talking about what are called, uh, flipped classrooms, which is where, you know, students spend a lot of time collaborating in the class. They go out and they read the lecture material or watch or whatever the, the case may be. Um, just sort of turning the traditional classroom a little bit on its head once in a while and doing some different teaching styles that really put the student at the center of driving the learning as opposed to the teacher who is standing up and pontificating. Um, and then the last one is implementation of Alt Ed. So last year we were able to put a plan in place that we, we felt like we were, we were ready to go. Um, we didn't have the numbers, so students, we didn't have that many students. Many of the students that had been sort of identified had moved out of the area, um, some had gone on to seek their GED. We've come up with a plan that's gonna be a little more proactive about how to do that and we're actually starting October, first week of October over the library uh, with June Lenkey as the teacher over there. Um, so that's actually going to be going into effect as opposed to sort of just planned theoretically. Um, so I was gonna bring in the same data that Tom had talked about for attendance, but actually the high school's attendance data really was not terribly interesting and that's in a good way. Um, the vast majority of students have attended every day of school so far. Um, there were a couple of students and then one was identified as somebody, well, this is a number of, of absences we're concerned about, so we're recommending that student to the student success team. Um, so that's, that's nice to have now a plan for a flow chart for if a kid hits a certain number other than just getting a letter home that says, hey, you need to attend more, this is state law. Uh, we actually have plans in place to build a safety net under these kids. Uh, the PLC reports, that was, the, the two PLCs and for those of you that don't know what a PLC is, it's professional learning community. It's a group of teachers working together to actually try to learn and do something effectively together. Uh, we set up two at the high school this year, one is the student success team. I asked teachers to sort of choose what they felt was most appropriate. Uh, the student success team is gonna be working with, uh, individual students, but also larger cultural issues at the school, sort of looking at students as a whole, what can we do to increase a positive atmosphere? Um, what do, what do students get excited about at the school and what can we use to do that? Um, so one of the things that they have helped implement along with a set of parents, um, they have posters down in the, the far hall here that have all of the seniors' names on them and just different photos and quotes and things like that. Um, so that, that came from a group of parents, they've taken that, sort of expanded on that, they put together a board that they're gonna call the Wall of Success. It currently says coming soon. Um, and they're working on identifying some, uh, some different incentives for things like attendance or behavior that they think that the high school students are actually gonna get into and then working with student council to do that. Um, the other one is a curriculum and instruction team and we're gonna be really looking at what it means to be a Gold Beach High School teacher this year since we have three new staff members, uh, along with several staff members who in the next three years are eligible to retire and some of them are planning on retiring. So really, we wanna look at not only what does it mean to be a teacher, but what does it mean to be a teacher here? What are the things we value, what are the things that we wanna see happen? Um, the other thing that we're trying to do is establish a performance rubric for every class, um, that will be used across every curriculum. So we're not talking like, you know, we're gonna micromanage what math is doing the same way we might do it with science or English. Uh, but really, it's anytime that there's a large project at the school, which we're trying to push people to think more about, um, here is the common set of criteria that we're gonna evaluate kids on. And that way, when they walk into Mrs. McGinnis's class and the she's, they see this rubric and they're like, holy cow, that's really hard. And then they walk up to science and they've got a project at the end of the semester, they go, that's the same rubric. I'm getting graded on the same things, it's the same things we value around, you know, refining my work, presenting it in a, in a manner that's professional and well-polished. Uh, the, the criteria, the, the level of work, the only thing that'll change will be the content. Um, athletics, uh, Sam already mentioned, you know, the, the guys are really kinda, they're holding their heads up, they're doing a good job. They're fun to watch, that's the thing that I gotta give them a lot of credit for. They have these moments that are just like these brilliant moments, but by the end of the game, those guys are dog tired. Uh, so it's really a rebuilding year, it's, it's, they're developing, they're trying to redevelop a new culture for what the, what football looks like at Gold Beach High Schools. The next home game is September twenty-seventh, we're gonna be playing St. Mary's Medford. Uh, kickoff's at seven, Mr. Brown is running the snack shack, so if you drive by and you happen to smell the, the overwhelming smell of grilled onions and garlic, that's him out there advertising, um, he is really working hard. He's taken on as our junior class advisor and his first question was, okay, if I'm gonna do this, I wanna do it right. Of course, that scares me a little bit as an administrator, I'm like, what does that mean? And then he goes, I got a menu, I'm gonna run by him. And he came up with this idea and it's, he's done a really good job and uh, they made a lot, they made a fair amount of money this first week, so he's excited to keep doing it and he takes a lot of pride in that.
It smelled really good.
Oh man, oh man, don't, yeah, don't-
I was sad I ate dinner.
I was gonna say, don't eat dinner before you come to the game, so, um, volleyball, Ms. Pierce, um, is a new coach here. She's been building connections with this team. Uh, really, the thing that's really amazing is that this is a group of girls who, in many cases, they struggled to get along last year. Uh, they have really come together and her focus in the entire time has been, I don't care if you like each other, when you're out there and you're in this uniform, you are a family and you work together. And uh, that's a really positive outcome for that team. Uh, they've struggled skill-wise and that's okay, they've got a very young team. Um, but, quite frankly, they're fun to watch and they walk away even from a loss once in a while going, man, we really learned something from that loss, which is awesome to see. Uh, soccer, one-to-one, I finally got it out of the, one of my favorite students on the soccer team, I, I always ask him how they did. It's, uh, Mr. Jackson, the first game, I asked him how you guys did and he goes, we're not gonna talk about that. Um, asked him how they did yesterday versus Glide and he lit up and was like, we won. Uh, so it's really nice to see soccer continuing to, to build and develop as a, a program here. Uh, they traveled to Umpqua Valley Christian tomorrow, so they left at eleven yesterday, they leave at eleven today, that's a brutal schedule for one week, but they're, uh, you know, it's, soccer's a growing sport in America, it's a growing sport even locally and it's a lot of fun to watch. So they're next Monday, they're here versus South Umpqua. Cross country, we do have three runners, Anna McCann was our, our one who placed, uh, tenth overall in the Tugman Invitational yesterday. Uh, so she did a really nice job, she, she stepped up and has been here every single day for practice and has consistently worked hard. Uh, two other students were there as well. Uh, they both, they both completed the race with, uh, with good times, but Anna was the one who, who placed. And then, a couple of opportunities that are coming up. So the gear up lab is fully built, we're waiting on a software purchase, but one of the things that's kind of exciting about that software purchase uh, is that we can not only look at maybe purchasing a couple of, fifteen sets of the Adobe suite here, um, there's the possibility to order a site license, which would order a hundred copies, which would allow us to put some in Riley Creek um, and distribute it around, 'cause we're not gonna use a hundred site licenses at the high school alone. Cool opportunity to expand that program a little bit. And then the other one is, in the next couple of months, we're gonna start looking at a, a textbook adoption catch-up. Um, we were, the district set aside some money for both schools to be doing that and to be, to be working on that. And the high school is a number of years behind, so we're looking at identifying some texts to catch up and then make a plan that would continue forward so it's a sustainable program. Anything I didn't cover for the good of you order that you'd like to know? Great, thank you.
All right, superintendent report, Mr. Wilson?
Mine's on the blue sheet, if you'd like to follow along. So first off, uh, you'll see our, uh, enrollment numbers as of yesterday. And we are down eighteen students from the time we were at this time last year. No cause for alarm yet, but, um, you might also remember that, uh, last year at this point, we came to the board because we had an unexpected amount of new students in those primary grades. And so we ended up hiring a, a, a new teacher, uh, in those first couple of days. And so, um, yes, that number was high and the result of that was, you know, having class sizes in the primaries continue to be on the, on the lower side. I really noticed that yesterday as I was in the classrooms and to see six, only fifteen or sixteen kids in a classroom at the primary level was pretty, pretty phenomenal. And then if you, if you compare it maybe into the two years ago, we're closer. And again, I, I don't have, Crystal has many years of, of historical data, but, uh, so we'll see how this trend continues. If you look, we, we were very similar to where we were in the fall of seventeen, so. Some PD activities that, uh, I wanted to share, uh, we've been talking, hearing a lot about the Student Success Act or the SSA. That is something we're gonna be, uh, based, it's the primary focus of this year. Uh, so I'll be attending a meeting, uh, on next Tuesday about the full, uh, implementation of that. And I did include in your packet, um, this email or this, uh, flyer that came out from OSBA. And it's a two-sided sheet, but it basically gives the board the timeline on how the rollout- will occur. And so you can see this next couple of months, we're finalizing the SIP or Continuous Improvement Plan. By the time we come back from Christmas break, we should be at a point where we have, well, before Christmas break, before December 6th, we have submitted our plan. ODE gives us feedback. We come back in January, a report to you where we are and then we begin to develop the action plan, which, which includes all of the ideas we have and all certainly all the budget items that go along with that. So in October, the, one of the major activities for this school year on the licensed staff is we've hired a company out of Cincinnati that will be with a consult, couple of consultants. They'll be working with the staff on the State In-Service Day on October 12th. Measuring What Matters is the classroom visit protocol. Certainly it begins to develop those expectations of best practices in instruction. The day prior, on the 11th, the three administrators will have their own full day of in-service as a preview to their responsibilities and actions that they will do in visiting those classrooms and providing effective feedback and so on. We would also, if we have mentor teachers hired by then, we would include them in that level of professional development as well. And just as a reminder for your planning, remember October the 2nd is our next work session with Renee. But then at the end of October, we have the regional meeting in Band and I've heard back from a couple of you. Is, can anyone else confirm or deny they'll be able to attend that, that Monday night? Are you still on the fence?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right. So again, if you'd let me know as soon as possible so we can make dinner reservations. Tomorrow is the, our district surplus equipment sale. We over at Riley Creek from 5:00 to 7:00, taking any reasonable offer for the many desks and chairs and pummel horses and other interesting things we have found, as well as some TVs that I mentioned earlier. As an aside, this summer we did sell three surplus buses and we netted $5,700 through, through those public auctions. And next, the personnel items, just to, as a remind or as a announcement, beginning of the school year, Mr. Denning, had a teacher, a position open when Kathryn Cleveland went to the administrative services position. So Chrissy Swift Adams was hired and I'm hearing good, good reports on her, her efforts at the school. And then two coaching decisions made in the last couple of weeks. Mr. Dubrava is the new Riley Creek cross-country coach and as of this afternoon, Sarah Pierce is joining the volley, the high school volleyball staff as an assistant coach. And an action item later in our agenda tonight are the, your board and district goals. I felt that maybe during our, during our October 2nd board training session, that would be a good time to finalize what my goals would be and what you'll be evaluating me on. So I've saved those for the action at that time. Available for any questions on my report.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Old business, we have, we have none. New business, 8.1 approval of licensed employees contract for 2019 through 2021, which is in the green. Yeah?
So this is the document in its entirety that was the end product of the bargaining with the Teachers Association. This is the, as you see, this is the raw language initialed and when it was tentatively agreed by the two bargaining teams. You'll see the italicized, that's new language. You'll see some things that are underlined or bolded that are changes. I know a lot of times we look strictly to the compensation package as far as the successful bargaining. It's not always about that. Sometimes there are some other language issues and, in the license as an example, this was a limited reopeners, so there were each, each side, if you will, could select two, up to two articles for discussion. So those are included in there. The highlights on the settlement as far as salary and benefits was that there would be a 3.5% increase and, and a step in salary and a 5% increase in the insurance cap for each of the next two years. And then those languages issues included some language around some time, additional time on grading days and that the new professional development rollout on Friday afternoons, that there would be some time where teachers would have self-directed rather than district or building directed activities. And Andy was the representative for the board. Andy, is there anything you want to add to the, this particular agreement or process?
Nope. Nope. I've signed off on it. We came to a good agreement.
I move to approve the bargain, bargain agreement between the district and Central Curry Educators Association for 2019, 2021 as presented.
A second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Contract approved, four to zero. Now we'll move to the classified employees contract, which is 2019 through 2022 in the gray.
So intentionally we tried to get the two agreements on off-years and so trying to bargain both at the same time was taxing and difficult to say the least. And so we appreciate the classified association working with us to have a three-year agreement. The salary and benefits were a two-year agreement and then we would reopen in March of 2022 or 21, for the 22, not 21, 22 school year. Isn't it weird to talk about the 20s and 22s? As it says in your notes, this was a complete contract from, from front to back and so everything was open. And again, the, for the compensation part, the highlights said it was a 6% increase in salary, but no increase in insurance for the next two years. And that was, that was their, how they came to us and we concur with that. In the high neon color yellow, that was the major light, language change and we've done a, did a significant amount of work around making definitions and revising the way that drivers clock their time and how they're compensated for their time. And so that's included then. This is all new language added to the gray section. And I think the third, the second gray is the actual hourly rates for the next two
Move to approve the bargain agreement between the district and Central Curry School District One Classified Employees Association for 2019, 2022 as presented.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Contract approved, four to zero. All right. 8.3 approval of board goals and district improvement goals and the line green, I guess you could call that.
So those would be your, the goals that we started in draft form at our August 30, August 20, August 30, 28, August 28 meeting. Actually, it was the 21st meeting, August 21 work session. And then I wordsmithed it with some of your input and then put this together for your, your consideration. If there's things that you want to change, this would be a good time to, this would be the time to make some alterations.
Think that's a pretty good list for one fistble.
Any changes?
Cross some stuff back up.
I move to adopt the school board goals and district improvement goals for 2019, 2020 as presented.
All second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Goals approved, four to zero. 8.4 grant applications.
So as per our practice, we asked the board give approval before we officially apply for grants. In this case, two of our high school teachers have submitted grants. The Selco Credit Union opened this up on their website in So Mr. Bigelow. It's a $1,500 cap and So Mr. Bigelow has, would like permission to apply for equipment to be used specifically the IO lab as it relates to, you can see the, all the different physical and physics curriculum areas that that would be done in, in compliance or in association with some advanced technology. The Gold Beach Youth Foundation is also, you know, obviously a local organization that gives local youth groups opportunities to solicit funds and Mr. Swift has completed the process to add some additional safety and worn-out football equipment that would improve student safety and meet state regulations for their equipment. And please notice my, Mr. McNair already did and I, my cut and paste has an inaccurate possible action, so you guys ought to be creative on that one.
Oh. I move the board approve the grant applications presented. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you. We'll be forward with those and let you know how we, how we do.
Very good. All right, 8.5 review of board policy, IIIGBA and IIIGBA-AR.
So just as a reminder, this is not a new policy. We're not suggesting any revisions or additions. OSBA has not made any changes to this. However, to be eligible for the federal E-rate program, we annually have to affirm these policies that we have in place related to, specifically to the Children's Internet Protection Act. The BUFF is the actual policy and it talks about how we have, you know, our filters in place and, and how we prohibit certain activities, but not only for minors, but for staff members as well. And then the yellow, the AR, administrative rules that go with that describe those, the Children's Internet Protection Act in more specific terms. And again, so I'm asking tonight, there are no changes, but I do need to request that you acknowledge that we have reviewed them and will continue to follow them as per law.
Let the minutes show that the board reviewed board policy, IIIGBA and IIIGBA-AR and made no changes to current policy.
Actually, no. Just change that, the, our synopsis here says IIIGBA, the sheet says IIBGA. Just clarify that for the minutes.
Yes, that the number, the letters were.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Dyslexia type. Okay, very good. 8.6.
When do you get a second?
Oh, oh, do we need, do you want?
It wasn't a motion.
It wasn't a motion. Oh, thank you.
Let the minutes reflect.
Thank you. It was just an action. Thank you very much.
8.6 proclamation of October as National Bullying Prevention Month. A bit of a dark blue sheet here. I see Mr. Clay out there. I'm assuming he wants to give, give us a few words in regards.
You can do both of the things.
What's that?
If work, you can do both of the things.
Well, we actually did.
I don't have two different species.
We, we did, oh, well, we, we did the suicide one last month.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is about bullying.
Oh, okay. So you're, all right.
Thank you for reading.
Who's reading tonight? Me? The whereas.
You're so good.
Okay. My radio voice. Okay, proclamation to support National Bullying Prevention Month 2019. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools and through technology such as the internet and cell phones. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of Oregon children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional and learning problems and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful and intimidated. Now therefore be resolved that the Central Curry, Central Curry School District Number One Board of Directors support this proclamation designating October 2019 as National Bullying Prevention Month and be it further resolved that our schools, students, parents, after school programs and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and Yeah. I move to support the proclamation of October 2019 as National Bullying Prevention Month and encourage our schools to participate in specific lessons and activities to make this not only an annual event, but an ongoing priority to improve our schools' cultures. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Proclamation approved, four to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Tracy, you want me to sign this one or do you have a?
I have a right.
Gordon, are you, is this about the suicide?
This is, this is about both.
About both, okay.
Suicide, yes, it's both.
Okay. Please, please continue.
This is the most, this top document just came out from SAMSA and I want to have that, but the second document is the relationship with suicide and bullying. Gordon Clay, working in Oregon. Bullying prevention in school is a full-time exercise. For the true change to take place, the current, the current culture of a school must be transformed, but it is not as difficult as it sounds. With a year-round bullying prevention program, clear expectations of faculty and staff and established guidelines on how to treat incidents, students and adults can take part in the culture of caring. Suicide and bullying connection. There is a lot of concern, even panic, about the ongoing problem of bullying and suicide-related behavior along, among school-aged children. Much of the media coverage is focused on blame and criminal justice intervention rather than evidence-based, action-oriented prevention. Increased awareness about how, what we do know, what we don't know and what information is most helpful and applicable to, to prevention is crucial to district's efforts to protect students from harm. The good news is that we do have evidence-based, actionable information to help prevent bullying and suicide. As teachers, administrators and school staff, you have a vital and rewarding role to play. Statistics on bullying and suicide are alarming. Suicide is the leading cause of death among 15 to 54-year-old Oregon Suicide is the leading cause of death among fifteen to fifty-four-year-old Oregonians, number one leading cause of death. For every suicide among young people, there are at least a hundred suicide attempts. Nationally, over fourteen percent of high school students have considered suicide. In Curry County, the question is seriously considered, which found eleven percent of sixth graders, twenty-four percent of eighth graders, and twenty percent of eleventh graders answering yes in the twelve months prior to last year's prior survey. In, nationally, almost nine, uh, seven percent have attempted suicide. In Curry County, it was eleven percent of sixth, seven point eight percent of eighth, and nine percent of eleventh graders that answered yes to the question, twelve months before the survey. Bullying victims are two to nine times more likely to consider suicide than non-victims. At least half of suicides among young people are related to bullying. Ten to twelve, fourteen-year-old girls may be at an even higher risk of suicide. One out of ten students drop out of school because of repeated bullying. Every thirty minutes, a teenager attempts suicide due to bullying. Harassment and bullying have been linked to seventy-five percent of school shooting incidents. Nationally, more than one in five students report being bullied. For Curry County, the two thousand eighteen Student Wellness Survey, fifty-six percent of sixth and the eighth graders, and forty-eight percent of eleventh graders agree in the thirty days prior to the survey. We know that bullying behavior and suicide-related behavior are closely related. This means youth who report any involvement with bullying behavior are more likely to report higher levels of suicide-related behavior. And we know that most youth who are involved in bullying do not engage in suicide-related behavior. We don't know if bullying directly causes suicide-related behavior. It is correct to say that involvement in bullying, along with other risk factors, increases the chances that a young person will engage in suicide-related behavior. As school administrators, teachers, and school staff in daily contact with young people, you are uniquely affected by these events, and I'm sure feel enormous pressure to help prevent them in the future. Final statement is, I am really curious how many of your, I believe eighty-one juniors and seniors are going on the job expo next week?
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Mr. Masker, maybe you'll give me an update?
Yeah, we've actually been presenting that in all of our CTE classes, and students are signing up, so we're still waiting to kind of get a final number so we, we can arrange transportation for it, but yeah, we're, kids, kids, you know, we've had it on the announcements for two weeks, they could, oh yeah, I heard about that, and then when we took it to the classes, that's when kids started getting excited, excited and talking about it, so.
Because if you see the video, it's so exciting to see young women that are running cherry pickers and not realizing that's something you can do, and you get like thirty-two bucks an hour, you know, so.
Alright, eight point seven, approval of bid to purchase two school buses.
I'll defer to Crystal.
One big one and one bigger one.
Yeah. A big and an almost big?
Yeah.
So you guys probably remember in the budget, we set aside some funds to purchase a couple of buses if that was going to be an option or, or work out, and then I had estimated some payments, and some interest payments, just truly estimates. We had a representative from Western Bus come and, and sit with us, Mr. Wilson, myself, and Jack Crater, the transportation supervisor, and kind of have a, a long conversation about what our needs were, you know, what we were wanting to do in the future, what were these buses going to be used for, and then she left and went over with Jack and sort of looked at the other bus that we just got last year and, and spent some time with him, working on the things that he thought, you know, should be on, on this, on these buses. This is what came from that. There's two proposals here, as you can see, the one is a sixty-passenger bus, the other is a seventy-seven passenger bus. If I remember correctly, it's pretty much the same bus, just one's a little bit bigger, basically.
A little bit longer.
Longer, right. All the specs are on here, if you're interested in looking at it. There it is. On the one that is the seventy-seven passenger, you can see then the proposed payment schedule on the back, and the total cost, as well as the annual payments did come in under budget when we received these bids. And it just so happened, the auditors were here when we received these bids, so they were already approved by the auditors as, as okay bids for us to be able to purchase, through our purchasing policies.
Two point eight percent.
Two point eight eight, yes. And we, we did know back, when we had the meeting, we're not going to have these buses real soon, because in this case, we're going to order them and actually have them built. There were no more of those wonderful deals that we had last year. We asked about that, and they just sort of smiled at us and said, you know, it's like, sort of like once in a lifetime thing that happens, don't ever expect it again.
They said, well, they were like forty thousand dollars under what they're.
Yeah, they were ninety-nine thousand.
Yeah, it was, we, it was a great deal, and it had less than twelve thousand miles on it, that bus. So these are actually going to be made for us to our specs, if it's approved, and at that point, I think they were clear out to February, so by now, we could be looking March, April-ish, give or take, depends on how many orders they've taken since then, since we had those original meetings. But we feel this is a real positive for the district to be able to even entertain this, honestly, to be able to do this, and it's much needed. It's, it's really needed.
One might question the difference of only two thousand dollars between a sixty and a seventy-seven, but the reality is that you, you know some of our roads, you can't turn around, I don't know, the top of Hunter Creek Heights Road in a seventy-seven passenger, and so, but a sixty, you can. And so, we're also, would anticipate that the, the smaller, if you will, has enough under, undercarriage storage to allow athletic teams to take those smaller buses as well.
So we're within the payment schedules, within our budget?
We're actually under budget.
A little bit under budget.
And as you can see in my notes, these are replacing buses that are over twenty-five years old. They should stop at twenty. They should be on the road much more than that.
I move to accept the bid from Western Bus Sales for the purchase of two new buses in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright.
Quick question on that.
Two school buses.
Do they ever quote seat belts, and do they put seat belts in buses these size? And I can only imagine the cost on what that is.
According to our, our rep, the answer is no.
Right, because they're built that safe, or right, right answer.
There, there has been some discussion about revising some of the regulations around seat belts, the higher seats and shorter, for some people, those are built better for others than others, but with that said, the, yeah, yes. The challenge with buses that come with seat belts is kids are required to use them.
We did look at some of the child's seats.
Yes.
Options, but we were, I think they were almost recommending maybe not.
Right.
You could do some aftermarket things if you need to do those.
As far as the specific. Carrying students under forty pounds or fifty pounds.
Thank you.
Very good. Alright, individual board member comments.
Thank you, the start of the year. Yeah, start of. Ms. Walker, thank you for, I, in the four years or whatever, I think I've been there, I don't know if I've seen a student representative sit.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job.
Thank you. This is true.
I, I have nothing extra to add tonight.
I do not.
I do not.
Alright, we will move to number ten. School board OSBA training, October second at five, regular board meeting, October sixteen at six, and the OSBA regional meeting in band in October twenty-eighth at five thirty P.M. If anybody has any questions or objections, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven twenty P.M.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if I could address the board four sentences?
You can say whatever you want now, I just adjourned the meeting.
It's just whether you listen or not, is what you mean. Everybody pick it up and leave. Okay. Sorry, I'll make it short. I gotta write, because my, my, Mr. Wilson announced the hiring of an assistant volleyball coach for the high school. That means three paid coaching positions in volleyball. Don't think that that assistant coach was budgeted for, at least not in the budget that I was given and that I looked over, which makes another position that was created that was not in the budget this year. Riley Creek has one football coach for full hands-on tackle, two teams, and we have no counts. Just wanted to point that out.